The Plain Township zoning commission regular meeting set for tonight, June 12th, 2019. We have one amendment for consideration tonight regarding a proposed rezoning from a rural residential district to an R3 low-density multifamily district near the Mount Pleasant and Pittsburgh Avenue area. But before we get to that, we have a couple items of business because this is actually the first regular meeting of this body this calendar year. And we have yet to have our annual election of officers and some other business. So if we could, Tom, would you call the roll?
Ms. Alder?
Present.
Mr. Craig?
Present.
Mr. Seberger?
Present.
Mr. Randbacker?
Here.
Mr. Crawford?
Here.
And Mr. Harrison?
Here.
The meeting is, oh, actually, let me see where I can turn that. Let's do the typical announcement. The Plain Township zoning commission duties include the following: we make recommendations to the board of trustees with regard to amendments to the zoning text and map. We do not have, the zoning commission does not have to prove to the applicant why his or her land should not be rezoned, but rather, the applicant must prove his or her case for the proposed change. Any amendment adopted by the trustees becomes effective 30 days from the date of such adoption unless a petition for referendum is filed within that 30-day period. The specific requirements for a petition of referendum are set forth in Chapter 519 of the Ohio Revise Code and Chapter 3501.38 of the Ohio Revise Code. As to the conduct of this meeting, our hearings are recorded to maintain a permanent record. All testimony is given under oath. All speakers must sign in and identify themselves by giving their names and addresses before speaking each time they speak. Speakers are only to address the board, not each other, address the board, and must provide factual evidence. Conversations between the speaker and an audience will not be tolerated. The applicant speaks first and presents his or her request. Next, anyone in favor of the application may speak. Then, anyone in opposition may speak. On occasion, I'll exercise discretion and have an opportunity for responses, but typically, those in favor speak first and opposed speak second. If there are a group of people here today that you are aware, share a viewpoint, and you have, for example, discussed this outside beforehand, and if you wish, we would appreciate that you appoint a spokesman for your group to speak the views of your group. We'll listen to everybody that wants to speak, but if you have common views and you know it can be articulated efficiently by one member of your group, like a homeowners association or whatever, we appreciate that. The board members will vote and reach a decision, and the decision will be announced. Should an additional hearing be necessary due to a continuance or postponement, the amendment would be rescheduled for the next available meeting date, and no additional notice will be provided. Anyone who is intending to testify or give, witness to any information tonight, would you please stand and raise your right hand? You swear or affirm that the information you are about to present is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge and belief?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we get to the beginning of the testimony, here is one item of business. With respect to the minutes of the last meeting, which was December of 2018...
Move to approve.
Those minutes were circulated and had to do with the text amendments we passed for roll-offs and dumpsters and unattended donation centers, if you recall. Are there any additions, changes, corrections, or deletions to the minutes as submitted?
No, we all second Mr. Crawford's motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Nanously approved. Okay, so you all have seen the agenda for tonight with the only matter being the proposed zone change amendment. Are there any additions, corrections, or changes to the agenda?
Herein none.
Herein none? We'll proceed to the first item of business then. If the applicant wants to step forward to the...
To the election first.
Oh, I'm sorry, we should. Okay. Thank you. We're going to do the typical annual elections we conduct. First, we typically nominate and vote for a chairman, and because I am in that position, I'm going to defer for the election to be conducted by Mr. Seberger as a non-officer this time. Would you please be willing to conduct the elections of officers?
I'd be happy to do that, so I would, and Mr. Chairman, I was actually prepared to make a motion, and that was to ask me to serve another term as chairman.
Second.
Any other motions or nominations through a chairperson?
If, if elected, I would serve another term one year.
I do not hear any other nominations. I'm going to call the matter. Would you call the roll?
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mr. Seberger?
Yes.
Mr. Randbacker?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
And Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
It works, it works better that way, doesn't it?
You can now conduct the remaining elections.
At this time, we'll conduct a nomination for serving as vice chair. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Mr. Crawford for that position.
Second. Second by Mr. Randbacker. Any other nominees? Close the nominations for vice chair. We'll be voting then for Mr. Crawford as vice chair. Tom, would you do the roll, please?
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mr. Seberger?
Yes.
Mr. Randbacker?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Okay, let's turn to our final remaining officer, secretary. Do I have a, any nominations to serve as secretary?
Mr. Chairman, certainly with the appreciation and regret to ask him to do it again, I'll go ahead to Mr. Randbacker.
Second.
Any other nominations? Close the nominations then. Are you willing to serve another year?
Certainly.
Okay. Tom, would you read the roll then?
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mr. Seberger?
Yes.
Mr. Randbacker?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
And Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
And thank you to our officers for another year. Okay, now we'll do the text changes for the zone changes being applied for tonight. If the applicant would step to the podium and tell us your name and your address, please.
Patricia Burcosi with Redwood, 7510 East Pleasant Valley Road in Independence, Ohio.
And what is your official capacity with Redwood?
Director of Deconstruction and Acquisition.
Okay. And you're the authorized member of the company applicant here today to make the application?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, tell us what you're asking for.
And I'm Bob, sorry, Bob Dyer, Director of Acquisition at the same address.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. What's your title? Director of Acquisition?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're here tonight for the rezoning, and what we thought we would do is with your packet, you received a submittal booklet for you dated 6/12/19, and I wanted to, this evening, we have that packet which we'll review at this site plan, thank you. And on April 17, Bob and I met with the, well, we sent out letters to the adjacent property owners and asked them to meet with us so that we could review whoever he was and what our thoughts were on the rezoning. And so we did have, I believe, three members of three owners attend the meeting with Bob and I and everybody on the 17th. So at this point, I would just like to, Bob and I are going to go through this, what we presented, and then we can start. Okay.
So, did I make an error?
Of course.
So that the members of the public have the same opportunity as we do, are you planning on putting up on the video what you've already presented to us in the packet?
Well, I will tell you that I thought that I had brought that one and changed it, but I did not. But we did bring site plans for you. And when we were here on the 17th, we did have a board that showed what we were proposing and that that we saw.
Okay. Just by way of reference for the audience, there was a packet that was submitted as part of the application, and was a matter of public record, and you all should, should have chosen to, could have reviewed that ahead of the meeting. It does show some site plans and some maps and some pictures of typical building and such, none of which is factual, it's just, I believe, informational or by way of assistance to help us understand what you're going to testify about.
And most of that will be on this.
Okay.
Actually, everything but the site plan is on.
Okay.
And then again, I have copies on that are in your submittal package, and I did bring copies if I needed to.
Excuse me just a second. That mic, it does not seem to be working. If you could speak up just a little bit.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I have a little bit of a hard time.
Sorry. I usually don't have a problem talking loud, so I should be okay. Just to give you a little heads up, in Redwood, we've been since 1991, and we used to have each individual neighborhood had its own name. And we went through a branding process, and now every single Redwood neighborhood, which right now we're going on 91, is having this Redwood sign. So everyone will have Redwood. So that's our sign. We are a single-story apartment developer. We're currently in six states, and we have 91 neighborhoods at this point. As of January, I don't exactly remember the date, but we had over 10,000 certificates of occupancies. And we're actively growing in new markets. In fact, we are just starting to go into the Chicago market as well as in Kentucky. And we, our plan is to build between 2,000 and 2,500 units a year. We have core values, and I'll just say one thing about that, we work hard to live by those, but, and the main thing is, we do one thing really well, and the add is build our apartment homes. Our residents are typically into nesters, young professionals, those who can afford 1,400 and up. I will tell you that when we've done the plan some, and our units will probably average more to $1,600 to $1,700. We have a few more different units with sunrooms, and those will, these for those. Most of the people, actually within our neighborhoods, but of course, should be here as well, is with a five-mile radius of the site. So most of the people who move into our neighborhoods already live in that area. We also have background credit checks where anyone who still got a lease with us, and most of the people who live with us went by choice. They're into nesters, they want to get equity out of their home, they don't, they want maintenance-free living, and that's who we sound in your spare. Our community exteriors, we feel they're attractive, traditional design, we all have stone and shake siding accents, all our roads are private, with individual driveways to garages. We have outdoor patios and garbage landscaping, no renewal or handled by Redwood. All of our units are two-bedroom, two full baths, slate flooring carpet in the bedrooms, a washer-dryer hookup, granite countertops, stainless steel appliances, ceiling fans, everything is very well-upgraded in our units. And those are some of the community exteriors. Actually, the one on the left is Hudson's, and the one on the right is, I believe that's down in South Carolina, Bob?
Yes.
In fact, the one on the left is where Bob used to live, in Hudson.
It's my little Uncle Sandmare by the, by the door. My dad made.
And that's a street scape, and that, actually, that's Bob's car right there. But that shows our street sapes. We have sidewalks, street trees going along, a lot of landscaping around each of the units, very, very well-maintained. Material features again, 1,300, 1,600 square feet, two bedrooms, two baths, private entryways, large unit kitchen, most of them have Energy Star, they're all Energy Star certified, and again, we have vaulted ceilings and a very open floor plan, which are examples of the open floor plans that Bob took those in North Carolina, I believe. But these type of units we build all over in our 91 neighborhoods. And here, on the right, in the right, on the right picture, on the right side, we also, a lot of our units have enclosed patios, which is there. And as you can see on the left, very open floor plan, you have your kitchen, great room area combined, and we're very proud of what our units have evolved over the years. Again, kitchen and living room. And then the dent, most of, actually, all the units now have dent, and then the master bedroom has master bath on the back. These are just examples. We have six units, Forestwood, Edgewood, Haywood, and those are just showing pictures of, you know, how they lay out. Willowood, Green, Capewood, and the Capewood is what I was referring to later before on the sunrooms. And people care about quality living. I will tell you, I've been with Redwood building communities between, over 10 years, and I feel that, you know, we change people's lives. Not, you know, a lot of people, as I said before, they don't really necessarily want to own a home, but they want to live in a place that feels like a home. And in this, with the, you know, with no, everything's branch level, no one's above, no one's below you, and our communities are safe, quiet, and extremely well-maintained. And I'm very proud of what we've done, and we're having over 91, 91 neighborhoods and growing. We're going to continue to do well and change more people's lives. I'm very proud of what we've done. Now, if you have any questions for this, otherwise, I'll turn it over to Bob.
Quick question?
Yes.
The owner, Jackson Township, Mount Pleasant LLC, is this your first venture with that entity?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just before, just before I step away from the podium, do you have a contract for purchase or an option on how to force this?
We have a signed purchase agreement.
Okay, and contingency on that signed purchase agreement is presumably procuring a rezoning?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, so with, with regards to the rezoning, one of the things that we typically do when we go into a community is kind of take a look online, if it's possible, but to look at long, any type of long-range comprehensive planning that the community has done in the past, to see if we would fit on, in the site location that we've, that we've selected. And fortunately, I don't know how many of you all were around, but back in 2012, there was the Plain Township Comprehensive Mini-Master Plan that was done. It was an update of an older, there you go, it was an update of an older plan, and it was done in conjunction with the county, and then there was a planning consulting firm. So anyway, took a look in the, in the document. For those that are familiar with this, obviously, you are, I'm going to try not to bore everyone, but I think it's, it's important just to go over a couple points. The purpose of the plan was to provide the township with a framework to assist in future decision-making and programming regarding land use, transportation, and capital improvements. This document is not a detailed action plan suggesting step-by-step instructions for specific projects, but it is instead a guiding document that aims to set the course for how the township wants to grow and develop. And there are a couple of critical components to the plan that made us excited about our location within Plain Township. A couple of things. First, on page six, under Land Use Planning Goals, there were two that stuck out: maintain a sound revenue base for the township through an appropriate balance of land uses. And then the other was to provide a variety of housing densities and values. The next item that jumped out was under the Zoning and Development section, where it talked about innovative measures need to be taken to create more housing opportunities for all Plain Township's population, especially its expanding elderly populations. And that's right up, that's right up our alley. Another section, under Residential Development, stated, "As the average age of the community continues to increase," and that's what the study found here in Plain Township, "housing options for elderly adults also need to be incorporated into any future planning efforts." Also, it's, on the same page, it states, "Current economic conditions suggest a continuing trend towards more people renting versus buying a home. As this trend continues, the township should work towards ensuring that affordable yet high-quality housing options are available in the community for both renters and home buyers." And then finally, towards, towards the end, the township was broken into geographic areas. We are located in the northern residential area, and one of the planning strategies and development policies for that area was to implement design standards to ensure compatibility between commercial development to the northwest and the predominant residential land uses. And we believe we are the perfect transition for what's happening in that part of the town right now. May I go over and speak from the map?
Sure.
Okay.
As long as you can project your voice, so we can all hear you.
I think I can do that. So this is the subject site. There's single-family homes on Cranwood and Serby to the south of us. To the west of us is Jackson Township, and you're probably all familiar with the new ConDoc building that went up. Immediately adjacent to us, on the east side of Pittsburgh Avenue, is a new office warehouse facility that will be, I think, they'll be, they'll be starting that this year. And we've got Debo to the north with parking immediately north of us, and of course, there's other institutional and commercial uses heading south on, on Pittsburgh. So what, I don't know if it feels this way to the folks living to our south, but especially with the last rezoning that attempted to look at industrialness location, but it, it just seems like industrial, institutional, retail, higher-intensity uses are coming in from the north and coming in from the west, and this appears to be the perfect opportunity for us to, to put in a transition. As Pat said, we're a low-density, multifamily community, single-story, two-car garage, which means that our, it's, we don't stack units, there's no one above us, there's no one below us, and so our density is, is much lower, and it would be a perfect transition from all the higher-intensity uses coming down to the single-family. And for those reasons, we hope that you'll consider a positive vote for our request this evening. Thank you.
Any members of the board have questions for the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Dyer, just a couple. I, I know on the preliminary concept plan, there's a 60-foot access easement.
Yes.
And is that of record right now?
Yes.
You don't have to have a copy of that, I was supposed to.
I might.
While you're looking, I'll just follow it up. Is that, that's going to be improved or paid?
Yes. That would be, what we're looking at is our typical concrete. I actually have the easement document.
And just so that the members of the commission and the audience can understand, you're talking about a driveway essentially coming in from Pittsburgh Road. Is that right?
Yes.
I believe that's on Jackson Township.
That is correct.
Is that a, is that a recorded document?
That is not.
Okay, I mean, is easement, when you say easement is of record, is it of record?
It's, it's a sign, it's executed by all the parties involved. It still needs to be recorded.
Is the intent recorded upon approval of the transfer of your property, or the property you're interested in?
Yes.
So there'll be access from the north off of Mount Pleasant?
Yes.
In Grisbane Egress there, as well as at the Pittsburgh, right-of-way you're talking about?
That's correct.
In, in your packet, if I may, I only showed what we were asking to be rezoned, but I didn't, I haven't.
Same as the statement?
Do you have that one?
We got that one.
Oh, I wasn't sure, okay.
The, I think it's important to note that we are not showing any access to the south.
Yeah, I, last week, I met Mr. Dyer when I was out looking around the properties in preparation for today's meeting, and I ran into Mr. Dyer and some of the people in the neighborhood there on the end of Serby Avenue where the zoning sign is posted. So we had a little, little impromptu discussions there, but those people at that time seemed concerned about Serby, the lumber, being a dead-end street. And part of my concern, and I concern is that we get halfway through this and find out that emergency first responders want to have a third way in, because there's a traffic plan that was done, needs to be updated, as noted in the Stark County Regional Planning Authority Commission Report.
Any other members have questions?
Here, just for, just for clarification, everyone else, at that end, at the southern end of the proposed development, there's a large buffer. Do you want to talk about that?
Sure. Typically, per code, there's a 50-foot setback required. We've added an additional 50, 50 feet, and that was actually the reason why I was out there last week. I brought pictures that I took with me, but the goal was to actually walk each property to understand view corridors, how, how our community would impact each individual home, so that when we do create a buffer, we don't necessarily plant all the trees in a straight line, eat... when we do create a buffer, we don't necessarily plant all the trees in a straight line equally, that there are some, there are some areas which may require more buffering than others based on the existing conditions out there. And it was, it was actually fantastic. It started out, Mr. Allison, and we had all sorts of people just come out, and we had, I think there were about eight, got a chance to talk to about eight folks, almost all of them except for two women that lived immediately adjacent to the property. So that was extremely helpful, that I was able to talk to the individuals regarding their specific property. Like I said, I took pictures, and we're going to use that when we come up with a specific landscape buffer plan. One, one item that I noticed just tonight, and I'm sorry, it happened so late, I wish I would have had the idea when we were out there, but in coming, coming to the meeting, I drove past Lexington Farms, and the frontage of Lexington Farms to me is a really good example of what we feel we can do along that buffer. Now, the mound on Lexington Farms is higher, I think, than we can do because the setback is deeper, but the number of trees and how that, how that works there would be a good example if someone wanted to go and take a look at how it works.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. On the northeast side, you know, Mount Pleasant, that's a retention basin. To the west right there of the property borderline, what is that exactly?
Right.
Well, I think there may be business operated out of the back. There's a building going down along there.
Right. There's a long, there's a long building that runs along the property line.
Yeah, I'm not sure what it is, but there's a house there.
Right.
And then, as far as project phases, how long would you, would you see this, what would this look like over the course of five, 10 years or?
It would be, it would be developed within five years, but I, well, I don't want to go too far. We talked a little bit about this last week with some of the folks that were out there, but typically, it would start out at Mount Pleasant and then work its way back to the south.
I noticed that the application, it would require conditional change to the conditional use application as well, because it's not exactly, doesn't fit the exact original application of the R3. But I was also looking at the, the number of units seem to be at 177. I, maybe my calculation is wrong, but I came up with the acres involved, it could have been 270 units.
Oh, if we maxed out, if you maxed out? Yes. Yeah, well, I mean, we, yeah, so I read that, I calculated that right, that's correct.
Question about the grade at the site. I see on your concept plan that there's a pond on the southwest.
Yes.
Is the natural grade of the land to flow to that pond?
That's...
So the zumbar ditch would not be utilized as a drainage point from this site?
It, the site breaks both ways. So it's, it's probably about 50, 50, maybe a little bit less flowing to the west than to the ditch or to the county area.
Are you aware of the Stark County Regional Plan Commission's recommendation with respect to your application?
Yes, I attended that meeting.
Okay. One of the provisions, or one of the comments included a reference to the open space proposed by your concept plan. Are you comfortable with their numbers that it's 22% open space and that would be compliant with an R3? Should the strict application of R3 requirements be, be applied to your application?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And are you intending on seeking a variance in any way for that?
No.
Okay. So, from what I'm hearing, the density permitted is 200, would be 270, but you're only talking about doing 177, which is substantially less than, than a maxed-out plan.
Right.
And the open space you're proposing is at least, is compliant with an R3, you're not seeking any variance ultimately on that?
That's correct.
And you understand a traffic impact study would have to be done, and we're not in a position where we can rule on those kinds of things. We're talking about a use, changing the use, the zoning designation, and that you might ultimately have to do an impact study and deal with whatever that is.
Yes, we understand that.
Yeah. Are you envisioning any difficulties with that?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I would point out that the last applicant was having trouble with the, the last applicant for this piece of property, rezoning application, had problems because there was only one way in or out. And that was through it before, it could, because it did not, was not recommended the prior application.
Again, because it was one way in and out.
Right.
Plus the use was, I think, a little bit more attractive for truck traffic and whatnot. Okay. You understand that we're not approving the concept plan as submitted, and we don't have the authority to do that at this point? We like that you showed us the possibilities there, but this rezoning would only rezone the use, and the specifics of the concept plan would be subject to further application and review.
We, we understand that. I know if I was sitting on a board, as much as you don't look at it, it would, it's nice to have an idea.
Well, sure, we'd like that, we'd like to see that. I think the members of the, of the audience and the public want to see what you have in mind.
Yes.
Does anybody else have anything? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any members of the public in attendance wish to speak in favor of this application? Or if you don't know if it's in favor of or against, if you have comments, I guess it should be okay to do it at this point. Sir?
Thank you. And you hit the nail on the head.
My name's Joe Caffey, I appeared here for the last hearing.
Your address, go.
11700 Cleveland Avenue Northwest, Union Town. And... Basically, I'm an adjacent property owner, and I can't speak for or against because as a property owner, I don't live there by, like a lot of these people do. They have more of a right to talk on it, but I thought it was imperative to go through and give them some basis of making a decision. I basically put together a matrix of RR, R1, and R3, just so they are aware of that. In fact, is that right? I bring these up just to make sure. Pass them on. And again, it's more information, I'm not, I'm not trying to say one way or the other. There we go. Thank you. I'm not trying to hide it either. The, the first thing I want to do is commend the Red Roof Group, because it didn't happen before, when we were talking about industrial, we asked, would you want to talk to people first to do this? Well, they made an effort, they came out before even this hearing, they went and met with the people, so I give them credit for doing that, you know, trying to meet with the neighbors. The other thing I give them credit for is probably talking and listening to the people who met with us before, instead of just trying to ramrod an industrial use down our throats, they tried to be more sympathetic by using and utilizing the residential. So again, I commend them, I think that's good. What I did with the sheet that I have, I went through, did a little homework, and again, it's more for the people behind me to realize what the apples-to-apples comparison to everything are. I talked with Tom, our zoning inspector, a little bit just to get an idea of what was going on, and I don't know anything, everything, it's in the book, but I try to get highlights that I can present here. And if I'm erroneous on any of it, let me know, because again, I want to make sure that I have the facts out there. The, basically going through, the current zoning for the tract is RR. And so I did a comparison all the way down. The plain R1 is the allotment they talked about to the south, which is one that I developed '04, '05, okay, '03, and it's R1, so that'll give us, you know, what we're butting against. And then I put the R3 in here just so that, again, our family members behind us understand the difference between the different groups. And these are all based on zoning facts, and I went to the MAC, so if you're talking 177-th density, I'm just using it based on what the numbers say. So for our group here, the lot area permitted, 30,000 square feet with sewer, and what that does is go through and help us to set up our density. Lot frontage is 100 here, they're going to be a big parcel, it's not a big deal, lot width of building is not a big thing, and even the front yard, rear yard, and side yards aren't that big because they're even going above that from, from the explanation. Building heights are the same all the way across RR, R1, and R3, so there's no big difference. But if I go through, and this is, I just want the adjacent homeowners to be aware of this, the densities that we're talking about, I've got on the 30.76 acre site, and I put cars, and I know Tom said, yeah, but based on their average, the number of cars is 1.7, well, I just use a two number and I show that on here, just so we have an idea of vehicle impact on that. But RR, the way it is right now, if you just went in and wanted to build houses, you could put 44 dwelling units on the 30 acres. That gives you 88 vehicles. The R1, which is similar to the allotment to the south, would be 89 dwelling units, 178 vehicles. And again, I'm preempting this, saying that, they're saying they're looking at 177 dwelling units, but based on 5,000 square feet per dwelling unit with sewer, I can get up to 267 dwelling units. Again, they're proposing 177, I understand that, but as Mr. Harrison suggested, you're just accepting the zone change. This is not a PUD where they go in and they have to get the plan submitted and approved at the same time. They can get the R3 zoning and come back and put whatever density. Now, again, it's going to be moved down to keep it looking like their other developments, and makes sense doing it that way, but there's that potentiality that they could come in and put 267 dwelling units.
Or that another owner, if this purchase agreement fell through, could do that?
Correct. Because they have the R3 zoning, which all of a sudden could benefit them, and they could come back with, instead of 1,300 square foot units, they could come in with 900 or 800 square foot units and put more density on it, so.
Let me just, because all of your assumptions you're talking about with the sewer, where does the sewer access for this site come from?
They just, they just put it in down at the bottom, right next to my property, on the west side. They extended it across from the ComDoc site, and that's right on that corner, with the intent that it's going to serve spring and then also come up and serve the residential line. That's my understanding, so. And then here, I said under R3 that you don't have these on the other sites, but the, requires a 20% of land to be set aside for the open area, and that, there was in fine print, but if you read through it, it said that that 20 acres, even though they have provided as open area, you can still count that as part of the density, so, because I went through and did my calculation first, and it reduced a lot of the units, but I saw that, no, you could keep that, so. So, and again, just in, in finishing here, I'm not trying to go one way or the other, I'm trying to just tell the facts so that the people who don't look in zoning books all the time have an idea of what's going on. Again, item one below, once, area for R3, there are no limitations to the allowable maximum density, so I just want everybody to be aware of that. The R3 zoning only permits a maximum of four dwelling units per building. There is talk, and you hinted around it, but there was talk that they are also going to go for the conditional approval through the VZA to get that bumped up to six dwelling units per building. What that means is that instead of smaller buildings, you're going to have bigger buildings and trying to put it all together.
Direct that to us.
Okay. I'm trying to share with them.
I understand.
The calculation for the R3 density based on the 5,000 square foot dwelling unit listed above permits 8.712 dwelling units per acre. Tom, in our discussion last night, you said it was somewhere between eight and nine, but I calculated, and that's what it ended up being, so. But again, if they go with their number, it's much less than that. But again, that's, that's the one question that I would have. And then the other thing is, the residential units planned for this community will be rental apartments, but again, based on your information, they're going to be in the $1,400 range per month, so. That's, again, it's a matrix, it's information that I hope that the neighbors can use. As, as a landowner neighbor to them, I just want to be open to them so they're aware of, you know, what the request is. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Caffey, what better use could you see of this parcel than residential, that is a transition between the industrial, commercial, and the R1?
I'm going to suggest, and again, this is my opinion, I'm going to suggest that although, and we talked about this at the last meeting, because Mr. Seawright said that, you know, if we could look at some options, planning something else where we could have a residential buffer makes sense. I agree. I just went through the whole thing. In my mind, I think the density is the only thing, I think it's a good use, it's a nice product, the density, the amount of traffic on the streets, the traffic study would help that, but it's a, it's a good alternative to what we were looking at under industrial, in my opinion.
So you didn't exactly answer my question.
I...
But better.
I'm not even a politician.
Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak in favor of the application? Okay, now we're going to go those opposed. Come on up. Were you here for the swearing?
I, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't understand. I thought it was, it was just the four people.
Okay. Well, I'm going to ask you, is there anyone else who wants to speak who didn't take the oath? Okay, stand up and raise your right hand. You swear or affirm that the testimony of Roger Gibson is, is the truth? You swear or affirm that is the truth within your knowledge and belief? Yes or no? Yes? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Your name and address.
My name is Erica Kelch-Slesnick, and this is a little... Erica Kelch-Slesnick, and I live at 3917 Cranwood, which is right on the border of the south border. Our backyard abuts the property that's being proposed. being proposed.
You're at the end of the cul-de-sac there.
Yes. Yes. And so I just, I actually have three concerns under three categories. Because I think Redwood sounds like a wonderful company. And, and I appreciate the fact that they reached out and communicated with people. And I think it's great they're serving the elderly. But I do have, I think I would like to see them be successful in providing homes for the elderly. But I just think the location may not be ideal for that. Mount Pleasant gets very backed up during rush hour. I'm sure many of you have seen that. And they say it's a low-density population that they're proposing. But I did the math based on, on Mr. Capley's numbers. He was assuming 267 dwelling units. So I, I did the math based on 177. And with his estimation, that would mean 354 vehicles added to that Mount Pleasant traffic. So that's one concern of mine is the, the density and the traffic. Another, another concern is the appearance. I, I went to look at the, the Union Town Redwood, and I also looked online at like North Hampton Akron, just a few examples. And some, some of the Redwoods have a prettier front appearance than others. But none of them are terrible. But the backyard is what we're going to be seeing. And I took a quick peek into her picture she had of a proposed development. And, and that's, you know, the backyards are, we're going to be staring at fairly close, even with the buffer. If you kind of look at her picture she brought with her, it's awfully close. It's not like a home backyard. It's, they're little. And they're, and I saw the one in Union Town. And basically, the backyard is, you know, the little, the little vinyl walls that kind of separate just to give a little bit of privacy from your neighbor. It's that kind of thing where you have vinyl wall, vinyl wall, vinyl wall. So the thing is, I know they're trying to give a buffer, but it actually didn't look very large in the, in the picture. If you look at the, the actual picture of what it's going to look at, look like. And so, I don't know, a part of me just went, oof, you know, that, I don't know if I'm looking at just this row, row, row of houses. It's almost like looking at the, the, the commercial thing that we were, had last been proposed. So that's a concern. And another concern of mine is guarantees. What if, what if we rezoned it and then were needed to back down? Would guarantee that it wouldn't become even a denser thing? I mean legally, could we just go, could someone else purchase it and even make a denser population? So is it guaranteed to become a Redwood? Is it guaranteed that there will not be a connection to Serby? Or if there is, that it would not be used? Is there a guarantee with a number of trees that are promised to be planted? Like, is that going to be in writing? Or is that just a promise that may or may not be kept? Or that they're going to build a mound or something like that? And I was also, I don't know if I'm able to ask a question. So if I can.
You can ask a question if we do it appropriately.
Okay. You said there might be a traffic impact study. Would the approval be contingent on that? Since it's going to be voted on tonight?
Well, we don't do traffic stats here.
Right.
We vote about a use. Then the applicant has a further step.
To propose.
To, to, with the site plan, with all the other requirements of development and whatnot. And that would, that would be something that is not within our purview to consider. But there are regulations about that.
You approve that they can go forward with that, with the safety study?
The use. The use. That it's going to be residential three as opposed to RR1 or industrial or whatever other use an applicant would come to us for.
Okay. So, you know, just, just that things are specified. Will they be specified in writing? Or are they promises? And, 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 you know, and even will it be elderly? Or will, you know, if the economy changes and they have to learn, right? Yeah, just a lot of things are just kind of promises and hopeful things. And also, is the, the density that's being proposed, does that need to be stuck with once you have permission? Just my curiosity. And then just something to think about. So that's what I have to say. And thank you very much for hearing all this. Appreciate it.
Ms. Slesnick? Wait a minute. Is there anybody here that has any questions?
Don't have questions, but thanks for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak tonight? Yeah? Mona?
My name is Gina Capley of Ariola, 3910 Cranwood Street. For my property, I have a vacant lot that mortars the property in question. I kind of just talking or expanding on what Erica said, my biggest concern is the traffic. I mean, I know when we were talking about the commercial back in November, you know, there was big issues there with the backups on, on Pittsburgh. I mean, I can sit for my room, and I can just see it backed up, you know, both directions. So that's a big concern. And then I guess my other concern with the traffic is, is if they would open up through Serby Street just on, like, people, the amount of cars, and I forget what number you said, but the amount of cars that would be coming down Cranwood into, to go into the new neighborhood, you know, in the newer part that of the allotment, they have sidewalks. But coming in off Berkey, there's no sidewalks. There's kids that ride their bikes on that road. There's people that walk their dogs, you know, day and, you know, day and at night. And then there's even, you know, a family where there's a member in a wheelchair that goes along that street. So I guess that, I just have big concerns about that, with the traffic, you know, related to people living on the streets. And that's basically, I guess I'm just kind of expanding on what she.
Any questions?
No.
Any questions for Ms. Capley of Ariola? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We have one more that we swore, sir, would want up.
My name is Richard Grelle. I live at 3763 Cranwood Street Northwest. My property abuts the proposed property that's being rezoned. Like everyone else here, I'm concerned about higher traffic count. In order to, I think, accommodate the extra cars plus the extra traffic from the industrial parks, they would have to widen the roads, a bunch of different infrastructure out there. Even then, you have Comdoc now on Pittsburgh's adding more traffic to the area. So that's one concern. My other concern is, I did see a picture of the, the backside of these units. And my property will abut the backside of these units. And I don't know if you've been out to Route 62 and Broadway. That is one of the Redwood properties.
Route 62 and Broadway. Blue's right.
Uh huh. And you can't miss it. That Redwood right on the top of the roof. But they're proposing that they want to string six units together instead of four. And if you look at the property out on Broadway, there are six units strung together. It looks like boxcars strung together. It's just ugly. And all they have is a separation of the vinyl between each unit. And that's what I'd be looking at. And that's what I'm concerned about, is the aesthetics. So you asked, what would be the improvement on that? R1, that's where I would prefer to go.
Any other questions for Mr. Grelle? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to use some discretion here and ask the applicant if there's anything in addition to what your presentation was that you'd like to add before we, before we make consideration.
Sure. Thanks. Those are, those are all excellent points. If I lived adjacent to the property, I'd have the same, same concerns. If I can just briefly address those. With, with regards to the density, because we're a single-story builder, that's all we build. We've never built a two-story building. We, we cannot build any more than 177 units on, on that property. It's physically impossible to do that. That doesn't mean that if we walk away and there's another, somebody else comes in, that they couldn't do, try to do something else. But we cannot build any, any more than that. The, a unique thing about our, our community and the age cohorts that lease from us is that our, from a traffic perspective, we are going to generate traffic. You can't deny that. But our peak traffic times are different than, than normal because of the, we do have younger professionals, but the largest cohort are folks like myself or older who are retired. And the peak, the peak flows out and into the community are later in the mornings and earlier in the afternoon. So they don't line up with the typical workday flows that you find in a single-family, single-family subdivision. With regards, I had a note here on the buffer, but I don't, I don't know what I was going to say. And with regards to the, oh, with the backs of the, the backs of the units, they, they are, it's just, it's just fine. With windows and sliding, each, each unit has a sliding door with a small patio. So I understand that, that concern. And again, this is just our commitment to the site. But if you look at your site plan, we went ahead and we put four-unit buildings all along the southern property line so that the mass of the buildings would be reduced adjacent to the, to the properties. And you'll, you'll see that in the site, the site plan. Thank you.
I have a follow-up question. And I know there's been a bit of discussion about, well, what if someone else comes in? Or what if you change your mind about, you know, the concept plan? Do I understand that there's been some care taken by this applicant to assess the market, to try to design to the customer who wants the higher-end apartment that would be the kind you're offering as opposed to somebody else who might come in and put 277 units on the property?
Right. No, we, that's a great question. We do demographic studies, detailed demographic studies. We know who's in the area. And that's the beautiful thing about it, that the people that are going to be living in our product are going to be Plain Township folks, are going to be Jackson Township folks. They're going to be people, as Pat had mentioned, they're going to be within a five-mile radius of this community. And that's the way it is in, in all our communities. 10,000 units, they're, that's all we do is this, is this product. We don't do two-story product. We don't do a different type of one-story product. This is, this is it. So we, we know who is going to be living there. We can pretty much almost nail it. We, we can estimate the number of school-aged children, which is very low. We can estimate how many people in each age category. And we don't target anybody. It's just the way the product lays out. There are no steps. Again, it's all single-story, nobody above you. What, what our founder wanted to do back, starting in 1991, is that he wanted to, when people would live in apartments, they typically had to give something up from a single-family home. And, and the two big things are, you'd have someone living above or below you, and there'd be the noise factor. And the second thing is, you'd be parking your car in an asphalt lot, and you'd have to haul your, whenever you parked, you weren't in a covered space, and you had to haul your groceries to, to the, to the unit. Every one of these units will have a two-car attached garage. So we've taken away the negatives. And now with millennials and with older folks who want maintenance-free lifestyle, the timing is perfect, perfect for us, I think, in this, in this specific location.
How long ago was, go ahead, question?
So this drawing.
Yes.
Of the buffer zone.
Yes.
So I drove out and looked at the property. And then yesterday, or today, I drove down and followed through streets. This, this hill is part of the plan, right? It's already there.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if these folks' house is here, they're actually straight line view is going to be above the houses?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That, yes. There will be some grading work. It's, it's not, I don't have a final grading. We don't have a final grading.
But right now, that's what it looks like. So that hill is going to still be there?
We have a one-story, it'll be, yes, it won't be built up. If anything, it will be leveled down. It'll be flattened down.
For the property. But then there has to be a hill. Unless you bring in a bunch of trees.
No, I mean, away from, away from those existing homes.
It's going to go downhill.
It's going to go, right. At the end, Serby, if it's going to, yes, it drops.
The buffer goes downhill, correct?
Yes. Yeah. And that's the other positive. Not only are we a single-story, from, from someone who's been focused on the buffering, it makes it that much easier to buffer. It's not like we have a, you know, you're looking up at a big building, you're looking down at a one-story building. We don't need to have monster trees to block the view up this way.
When is the purchase agreement scheduled to be closed?
Upon approval.
Upon approval by?
Final approvals.
Final approvals of what?
To build the, build the product.
Okay. In addition to the contingency of approvals, are there other contingencies to the purchase agreement?
There, in all of our purchase agreements, there are contingencies. I, I can't, I'm not going to get into the details of our purchase agreement.
Well, this is important to me. Is financing a condition?
Yes.
Okay. So are there other conditions or contingencies?
There's the same contingencies you'd have if you were buying a house.
Okay. And what are they?
Well, when I, when I.
What are they for this particular 30 acres?
I'm not going to get into a private contract into the specific detail of that. That's, actually, there's a confidentiality, there's a confidentiality clause which does not allow me to do that.
That is fine. Just be aware that that may or may not be important in my vote.
I, I, legally, I cannot convey that information because of.
Legally, legally, you can. But that's, we won't debate that point anymore.
Well, if I have a confidentiality, I'm not an attorney. If you're an attorney, you're advising me that I can.
No, a board member of a governmental board is asking you a question under oath. And I don't know what your confidentiality said. I don't want to put you on the spot either to be uncomfortable with, with your role with your employer, or with the commitments you've made with another party that you're looking to buy the property from. That's not what we're here about. And I'm, I'm not sure what my colleague is specifically looking for. But you're, you're, there is a, there is an inquiry being made by a governmental body.
I can, what I, what I think I can say is that the way all of our contracts are typically structured is that we move forward when we have the approvals necessary to build our, our project. We would not, we would not close on a property if we didn't, if we didn't have approvals.
Any other question from any other members? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, at this point in time, to put the matter on the table, I'm going to move approval of the proposed amendment.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Seiburger, a second by Mr. Crawford, to approve the application to rezone Amendment 573-19. The. to rezone Amendment 573-19, the parcel 10009779 from R2-R3. Discussion.
I will begin. I think that the Redwood concept looks pretty good. I've heard the concerns expressed, such as by the gentleman in the back of the room, that maybe there's at least some potential that it's not ideal. I am very concerned that the application is being made on behalf of the party and that does not have a present ownership interest in the real estate and that if we or the township trustees are hopes to rezone to R3, the deal falls through because of some contingency in the purchase agreement we don't know about. And we now open the doors to, as Mr. Kaplan has pointed out, up to 267 units. I do share the concern of residents. I've driven Mount Pleasant a number of times at what you might call rush hour. And rush hour is basically when D-Bold is starting and when D-Bold is getting out, it is very significant. I know that with Comdaca coming on board, and they're getting ready to do the traffic circles near my neighborhood, it's just simply going to increase. So that's a concern that I have. I guess what I'm saying is I don't know that the applicant here has the skin in the game or the, maybe what the lawyers might call the unnecessary standing to make the application.
Who signed the application? It's signed by the owner. Yeah, the applicant had permission of the owner to make the application.
Technically, standing is there because of the owner making the application, but the owner is not here that I know of.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I may?
Please.
I was reading the Star County Regional Planning Commission recommendation, which overall they recommended approval. That's not, they're just recommending, it's not up to them. I found, I share some of the concerns of the residents that have been expressed, and I think I've expressed some of them as well. You do have a plan, comprehensive mini-master plan. The idea is, this property seems like a perfect property to fit into this transitional mode that they talk about in the plan. And then specifically, we've got all this industrial and then some R1, and this would be the type of transitional use that is at least contemplated by the master, mini-master plan. So I do share some of your concerns, but I also, you know, the owner has a right to try and sell this property, and it already fell through once because it was, he was going to, or he or she or it was going to make it industrial. Honestly, my biggest concern is that they're going to go ahead and be forced perhaps by the traffic study to open up survey, to traffic to the south out of this property. As a general proposition, I hesitate to vote against this.
I tend to agree with you. I mean, I think that this piece of property is going to become something, and no matter what, one of the things that we're going to have to deal with is traffic. Even with the traffic study, I mean, eventually, what they do with traffic is they put in circles or they widen lanes, they take care of that. So I just, you know, I was here for the, when this was going to be a light industrial, and I understood all the concerns of that. I just think this could be a potential missed opportunity. So that's where I sit.
Please.
Just so you know, in case you're wondering why I'm not voting, I'm the alternate, and this is my first meeting, and I just would like to make some comments because I live on the end of the dead end as well. My husband was a D-Bold employee, and traffic can be terrible, but only at those times of day. He can make a home, and I live right over here, and intended it so much every day. And he's now retired, and you're absolutely right, the prime times for driving for retired people are after 10:00 a.m. and then before 5:00 p.m. I drove down the street that possibly could be extended survey. It seems unlikely to me that a lot of people would use that entry. It's very slow, it's beautiful, but it's, I think you're going to, I don't think there's going to be as much traffic coming through that area as the other two areas. I live on a dead end. I know that at any time they, I guess I knew that when I bought the house, they could, if the 35 acres next to me gets sold, that street's going to extend. But the alternate is R1, and it seems so unlikely to me that this would be a wonderful, big, beautiful residential development in the future. It really does. You guys have fabulous houses at the end of those cul-de-sacs? But if this becomes a residential one, and there's a 20-foot backyard, take it from somebody who's had some scary neighbors, you have no idea what your neighbor's going to look like 20 feet away. I mean, to me, that would be a concern as well. So I just think the idea of R1 is unlikely, that this buffer zone idea is going to be way more likely to have beautiful houses. And actually, the houses coming up to those houses in that neighborhood kind of look like these houses. They're one-story, like I said, I drove down it today. They're all one-story going in that street. And then the newer development has the nice two-story houses, but it's all very nice. But if this works, and that would be my concern, if this comes, then you've got some concerns. And I don't know the rules about how do you hold these people to this agreement, but I think they seem pretty sincere. They've done an awful lot of planning for not having it happen. And I like, I asked that question about the drop because that changes the perspective of what you're going to see in that yard, in your backyard. 90 feet is the exact width of my backyard, so it actually took quite a bit of space, especially because it's downhill, because then you're seeing something different, because these are two stories. So I just, I think with all the concerns are well-taken, but I think there's a reality check here that this could possibly be the absolute best option even for the neighbors that have those big beautiful houses at the dead end, because the alternate plan, if it just staying empty, which is what I hope my 35 acres next door does, but that's just not going to happen for a place that's already, this, obviously, this owner is motivated to sell. And the idea of him selling to someone that's going to build a residential one development, to me, seems unlikely across from the old, for really nice houses anyway. So that's just my thought.
I have observations too that I'd like to share at this point of discussion. First of all, I am very impressed with the participation of everybody here. It seems like everybody's got a well-reasoned and a appropriate perspective on, their comments reflect that today. I appreciate the applicant's touching back to all the planning, the mini-master plan, the commie plan. We do rely to a degree on what the expert planners are telling us each to happen with land uses as they change in our township. And I'm impressed with the fact that regional planning is recommending this. I'm impressed with the response that there seems to be, when we said no to the industrial, and it was clear that something in a transitional type use had to be made to protect the R1s nearby and the inevitable industrial is happening in Jackson Township over which we have no control. So I'm kind of impressed with our new member and her observations about the inevitability of something happening here that's going to have to be a balance between all adjoining uses, and I'm in favor of the plan. So I guess we get to vote now. Tom, will you call the roll?
Did John want to say anything?
Oh, Josh?
Yeah, I like the plan, and I'm also impressed with the presentation. If I could, I don't think we can, but I would love to see some sort of approval with conditions relative to imposing, self-imposing some restrictions, instance on maximum density. And that would delay, Terry, some of the concerns you had, some of them were shared by the others. Same thing with respect to the four-unit structures that are being considered along the southern boundary. I would like to see the voluntary imposition of restriction that makes that so. In other words, the approval would be conditioned upon, this is what these folks are going to see back there, because that's something you've essentially committed. Same with respect to the density. You know, the concern I would have would be, yeah, you don't get your other approvals for your site plan, and that could happen. And I know for sure you have contingencies for other aspects of the development, and that makes sense, that's reasonable. But if, for some reason, this zone change is approved, now we have a maximum density of 267 dwelling units, it's an attractive property for somebody, some developer, that's going to put in apartments or structures that aren't as, frankly, as nice as what you presented. So as I said, if I could impose my will on it, I would conditionally approve this, conditions being voluntary imposition of restrictions limiting the density to what has been proposed and limiting, or at least making sure that the commitment to put the four-unit structures along the southern boundary is honored. I don't know whether we can do that, Steve. The applicant would have to, the applicant would have to accept those conditions.
Well, yes, and I think we're missing something here that our applicant is telling us, and that is that the market that they are looking at is going to want the kind of the same assurances that these neighbors and we want too, that they're going to want to preserve the aesthetic of this play-in so that they're getting the value that they're paying for. And just as beautiful buffers, et cetera, are good for adjoining neighbors, they're also good for the people that are renting there. And if they market this to the potential buyer that I think they're telling us they're going to, they will be able to say, look what we've done beautiful here, we've made this better than we need to, and that's why you should pay us what we're asking for rent for this facility. So I, so I guess I'm a little more inclined to sense that the marketing is going to solve the problem on this, if they want to make this project work. I hear what you're saying, but I also believe, as you suggested, that we don't have the right to condition density. If we vote for an R3 and the density is what it is, we are opening up to the possibility that the most dense use could be made, albeit up to the conditional use and the consideration of the BZA on any modifications to the R3 requirements that might be required for this particular project.
Yeah, again, it's not Redwood I'm concerned about. These folks are very sincere, the presentation is very good. It is, if Redwood does it. And that's a possibility.
That is the concern, that is the concern for me. I mean, the concept I've seen, and I, you know, what I appreciate, the new members' comments, very much, as far as we do agree, is this is going to be developed at one way or another. If it is developed, we hope it is Redwood that does it, and that Redwood does, I mean, you've already been talking to residents of the area. I hope that you take into account what some of them have said about the appearance of the rear of the buildings. Mr. Harrison, I think what you're saying is that to some extent, you can't elicit the guarantees that the market will impose its own, or extract its own guarantees from the developer.
And the commitment of time and effort and expense already by the applicant is apparent to me, that there's a degree of commitment to the project that maybe we should give them the benefit of the doubt on that.
I have no doubt, if I knew to a certainty, that it was Redwood that's doing the development. I'm going, I mean, I'm going to support this with some sense of trepidation.
Any other comments? Okay, so we have the five permanent members of the commission that are going to be voting now. Tom, if you'll take the roll, please.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mr. Seiburger?
Yes.
Mr. Randbacker?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
And Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
The application approved pass unanimously. This matter will be referred then to the trustees for consideration at their next meeting. They have our recommendation, it's ultimately their decision on the zone change. I want to thank everybody for their participation and their citizenship here tonight. Thank you very much. I do want to bring a matter to the board's attention. I am aware that there's going to be a meeting next month. Oh.
I'm sorry, sir. The board and the public attorneys that got together this night, they should table that or not.
Okay, so forget what I just said. I've been in contact with the committee expecting that there was a matter coming up through the.
And there was.
System regarding definitional changes for.
Gain.
Gain, scaling or skill gain that uses in our township, but apparently that's not being advanced at this time.
No, it's still looking to come to the board, but they've decided to hold off until they find.
Okay. All right, so we don't have a meeting, as far as we know, for July.
We do have a schedule.
All right. Anything else? Where we could have a scheduled meeting. That's correct.
Don't worry, Tom. We're very serious. We'll be here for you.
We've got the feedback.
I have a question.
I want to be able to.
Okay. Okay, so, sure.